There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gitch.
President.
Alderman Doud.
President.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have fourteen members present.
And we also have Mayor James Donches and Corporation Council Stephen A. Bolton in attendance. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. The main item on tonight's agenda is of course our 19123, which is the fiscal 2020 budget. The Budget Committee, I proposed it at the first meeting in March, Budget Committee has considered it carefully over a whole series of meetings and has reviewed budgets of each department with representatives that have come before the committee, so I appreciate all of the time and effort that the Budget Committee has put in on this particular budget. Some of the things that are proposed within the budget and which would be accomplished by it are we would, we are going to be able to do thirty miles of paving plus thirty-one miles of crack sealing this year in order to improve city infrastructure. We've discussed the paving many times, but we went through a period of decades where not enough money was directed towards this portion of our infrastructure and I believe the Board of Aldermen and the city have done a good job in budgeting more, a lot more for that purpose, and we see the effects of that all over the city every day. The budget would also, despite a major challenge that I will get to in a moment, would allow us to limit the tax increase to three percent. It maintains the quality of our services and does not cut back on services, in fact adds to some, so that is always, in the face of substantial budget challenges, just even maintaining the quality of services is always a challenge. The budget funds an energy manager for the first time, which will help us develop energy-saving projects and make the city greener at the same time. I asked the Budget Committee, and they're recommending a change, to include half the price of a, half the cost of a grant writer, thirty thousand dollars, to pay half of the salary and compensation of a grant writer, which we would, the other half would be paid by school department, we would share the grant writer with them in order to bring back funds. Both that position, the grant writer and the energy manager, over time would pay for themselves. I propose that ELL teachers, we put in escrow two hundred thousand dollars for ELL teachers, this is English language, English as a second language teachers, to make sure that some of the students that we have, and we have a lot, that come to Nashville without fluency in English, learn English as quickly as possible so they can be integrated into regular classrooms. The budget would initiate Imagine 2040, which is their first citywide master plan in twenty years. The budget increases fire dispatchers. The dispatch load with the same number of dispatchers has gone from something like a few thousand calls a year to over eleven thousand calls with the same number of dispatchers. The funding for the new dispatchers would actually be realized by the, from the ambulance company, AMR, as a result of the contract, the renewed contract that you approved in the last, I think at the last meeting of the Board of Aldermen. The compensation that the city is receiving from AMR is three hundred and fifty thousand in the first year, that escalates over the term of the contract, and that offsets the cost of the additional dispatchers. The rationale there, of course, is that the ambulance service is a big user of the dispatch team, and therefore they're helping to pay the cost, and by help, by covering the cost of the additional people that we would be adding. Now, the main challenge, which we have talked about before, is the three point three million dollar increase in the cost of employee healthcare. This is an eleven percent increase, a huge budget challenge while we're trying to keep taxes and the budget increase as moderate as we possibly can. That is a single line item in the budget. Now, the remainder of the budget is up only one point six percent, but because of the healthcare increase, the overall budget is up about two point eight six percent. Again, without, if the healthcare had maintained a very modest increase, the whole budget would be up more like one point six. So that is the main challenge. As a result, I gave budget guidelines to the departments of one point, of two point two five percent for the major operating, major service providers, those being schools, fire, and police, and those are the budgets that I held them, those are the numbers that I held them to. The other, the other departments were given targets of one point seven five percent. The two, the two hundred thousand for the ELL teachers is over and above the two point two five that the school department submitted. And that, of course, would remain in the contingency account until the Board of Aldermen votes to release it, to meet the purpose that, the priorities that the school department have articulated, which indicate that ELL teachers are at the top of the list. So those are some of the things that we would accomplish by the budget. It's, as always, the challenge is to balance the ability to pay with the need, the service, the needs for service in the community. I think we've reached an appropriate balance, and I know the Board of Aldermen is considering some moderate, modest changes to the budget, but in the whole, the budget does accomplish what we had expected, we can achieve a three percent tax increase, we can meet the challenge of an eleven percent increase in healthcare costs, and we can make some improvements in both service and infrastructure at the same time. So I hope the Board of Aldermen will consider and pass the budget. We do have a couple of appointments tonight, I want to thank them both for serving. We have Philip Sconces, who's going to serve as an alternate on the Downtown Improvement Committee. Of course, Mr. Sconces and his family have operated a very successful, prominent downtown business for generations, so I want to thank him very much for agreeing to serve. And Bob Hayden is going to serve on the Energy and Environment Committee. He has a great background for that committee, and I'm glad that he's agreed to serve in that capacity, so I want to thank, thank him as well. And finally, coming up on Monday, there is Assessing 101 for any members of the public and the Board of Aldermen who wish to attend. Hopefully you can. The basics of assessing, the procedures, the principles involved, the reasons for assessing will be discussed at that meeting, so anybody in the public who is interested in that subject should come next Monday night to the City Auditorium. And finally, probably Alderman Lopez will mention this, but coming up on Saturday, we have a very exciting event, which is the annual Tree Streets Block Party, starting, I believe, at two o'clock. He can fill you on all the details. I'm certainly going to be there, and I hope as many people as possibly can from the board attend as well. Thank you very much, Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor, I'll start on this side. Alderman Malisi Goya.
Mayor Donches, what time on Monday? Is it six thirty, seven?
Seven, I think it's seven, but that should be, we should check that just to make sure. I think it's seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meeting. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Paula Johnson relative to ordinance nineteen dash zero four four.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Patricia DiPietto relative to proposed city charter amendments, resolution eighteen dash zero seven three.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication has been received and requested to be read into the record from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Division Director to the Board of Aldermen and Board of Assessors dated June seventh, two thousand nineteen, relative to the email sent to the board on June fourth, two thousand nineteen, L. Ordolano. Dear members of the board, I am writing to correct some of the inaccurate statements which has been, which have been sent to the Board of Aldermen and Board of Assessors in the past week. Attorney Mike Broth is conducting an independent investigation regarding the allegations against Mr. Turgis. I am not seeking to influence the investigation in any way. I am seeking to correct misinformation. Accordingly, we respectfully request this communication be read into the record and placed on file. We continue to receive multiple right-to-know requests almost daily from a member of the public regarding this matter. In an email dated June fourth, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Lori Ordolano stated Greg Turgis visited three properties in January, three in February, and one in March. The email then asked how Mr. Turgis could have driven six hundred and sixty miles in those three months. Ms. Ordolano cites an Assess Pro report as authority for the statement. This report was given in response to the right-to-know requests, its intended use and the data it collects were not discussed. Ms. Ordolano's statement is inaccurate because the Assess Pro report in no way captures all of the work or all the properties visited by any assessor in any, in a given time. The report only indicates that during a certain time period, the assessor used Assess Pro to make corrections with respect to the listed property. An assessor typically performs a great deal more work and makes a great deal more property visits than are captured on this report. For one example, a visit may be in order for the investigation of a charitable exemption, where the assessor needs to evaluate if the building is being used for a qualified charitable purpose by the applicant. This would not warrant a change to the property card captured in this report. The email from Ms. Ordolano also infers that Mr. Turgis is checking work within the assessor's office. Mr. Turgis is not in any supervisory role over other assessors or their work. The assessors are using a peer review approach, where their work is reviewed by at least one or more of other assessors within the department. They often confer with each other on different cases. This results in a more equitable and consistent application on subjective items such as the condition of a property.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening, no one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchens relative for Neopost IN seven zero zero DS mailing solution.
Alderman Kelly.
I move to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase order lease with Mail Finance Inc. in the amount of twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchens relative to the contract for long-term management of wastewater biosiles.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Resource Management, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred and seven thousand fifty dollars.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchens relative to the contract award for emergency notification system.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to accept, place on file, and award a contract to OnSol LLC in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A petition has been received for the release of a facade easement.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition as read and refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Paul R. Bergeron of Fifteen Stand C Place in Nashua to the Office of the Board of Assessors for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the mayor, and respectfully request that the appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment as read and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May twenty ninth, twenty nineteen Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June fifth, twenty nineteen Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June third, twenty nineteen Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Downtown Improvements Committee.
There being no objection, I declare Philip Sconces, one sixty-nine Main Street, Nashua, duly appointed as an alternate member to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December first, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Sconces, would you come up and take the oath, please?
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as an alternate member to the Downtown Improvement Committee, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I absolutely do.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Eighth reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero seven three.
We have Phillip Sconces is going to serve as an alternate on the Downtown Improvement Committee. Of course, Mr. Sconces and his family have operated a very successful, prominent downtown business for generations, so I want to thank him very much for agreeing to serve. And Bob Hayden is going to serve on the Energy and Environment Committee. He has a great background for that committee, and I'm glad that he's agreed to serve in that capacity, so I want to thank him as well. And finally, coming up on Monday, there is Assessing 101 for any members of the public and the Board of Aldermen who wish to attend. Hopefully, you can. The basics of assessing, the procedures, the principles involved, the reasons for assessing will be discussed at that meeting, so anybody in the public who is interested in that subject should come next Monday night to the City Auditorium. And finally, probably Alderman Lopez will mention this, but coming up on Saturday, we have a very exciting event, which is the annual Tree Streets Block Party, starting, I believe, at 2:00. He can fill you on all the details. I'm certainly going to be there, and I hope as many people as possibly can from the Board attend as well. Thank you very much, Madam President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor. I'll start on this side. Alderman Melissa Goya.
Mayor Donchus, what time on Monday? Is it 6:30, 7?
I think it's 7:00, but that should be, we should check that just to make sure. I think it's 7:00.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meeting. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May 28, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Paula Johnson relative to ordinance 19-044.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Patricia Dipietzou relative to proposed city charter amendments, Resolution 18-073.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication has been received and requested to be read into the record from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Division Director to the Board of Aldermen and Board of Assessors dated June 7, 2019, relative to the email sent to the Board on June 4, 2019, L. Ordolano. Dear Members of the Board, I am writing to correct some of the inaccurate statements which has been, which have been sent to the Board of Aldermen and Board of Assessors in the past week. Attorney Mike Broth and conducting an independent investigation regarding the allegations against Mr. Turgis. I am not seeking to influence the investigation in any way. I am seeking to correct misinformation. Accordingly, we respectfully request this communication be read into the record and placed on file. We continue to receive multiple right-to-know requests almost daily from a member of the public regarding this matter. In an email dated June 4, 2019, Ms. Lori Ordolano stated Greg Turgis visited three properties in January, three in February, and one in March. The email then asked how Mr. Turgis could have driven 660 miles in those three months. Ms. Ordolano cites an AssessPro report as authority for the statement. This report was given in response to the right-to-know requests. Its intended use and the data it collects were not discussed. Ms. Ordolano's statement is inaccurate because the AssessPro report in no way captures all of the work or all the properties visited by any assessor in a given time. The report only indicates that during a certain time period, the assessor used AssessPro to make corrections with respect to the listed property. An assessor typically performs a great deal more work and makes a great deal more property visits than are captured on this report. For one example, a visit may be in order for the investigation of a charitable exemption, where the assessor needs to evaluate if the building is being used for a qualified charitable purpose by the applicant. This would not warrant a change to the property card captured in this report. The email from Ms. Ordolano also infers that Mr. Turgis is checking work within the assessor's office. Mr. Turgis is not in any supervisory role over other assessors or their work. The assessors are using a peer-review approach, where their work is reviewed by at least one or more of other assessors within the department. They often confer with each other on different cases. This results in a more equitable and consistent application on subjective items such as the condition of a property.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchus relative for Neopost IN700DS mailing solution.
Alderman Kelly.
I move to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase order lease with Mail Finance Inc. in the amount of $20,231.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchus relative to the contract for long-term management of wastewater biosiles.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Resource Management, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,507,050.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchus relative to the contract award for emergency notification system.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a contract to On solve LLC in the amount of $66,000.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions.
A petition has been received for the release of a facade easement.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition as read and refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Paul R. Bergeron of 15 Stansey Place in Nashua to the Office of the Board of Assessors for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the mayor, and respectfully request that the appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment as read and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 29, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 5, 2019 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 3, 2019 Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Downtown Improvements Committee.
There being no objection, I declare Phillip Sconces, 169 Main Street, Nashua, duly appointed as an alternate member to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December 1, 2021. Mr. Sconces, would you come up and take the oath, please?
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as an alternate member to the Downtown Improvement Committee, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I absolutely do.
Environment and Energy Committee.
There being no objection, I will declare Bob Hayden, 84 Dutton Road, Lineboro, duly appointed to the Environment and Energy Committee for a term to expire January 21, 2020. Would Mr. Hayden please come up and take the oath of office?
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Energy and Environment Committee of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire and the rules and regulations of the city charter, so help you God.
I will. Thank you.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Eighth reading of Resolution 18-073 amended, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to filling vacancies on elected boards by majority vote of the remaining members of that board.
Alderman Kellin.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that R-18-073, as amended, is necessary and that it be submitted to the voters by placing it on the ballot for the November 5, 2019 Municipal General Election.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-123 relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget for the City and Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to amend R-19-123 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made by the Budget Review Committee by a roll call.
The motion is to amend 19-123 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made by the Budget Review Committee by a roll call. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just to clarify what the amendment is, the, when the budget was presented, a motion, an amendment was made by Alderman Kelly, and the motion was to increase the mayor's budget by 65K to address the cost of two school paras. Correct?
And a counselor.
And a counselor, if they can squeeze that in, in that amount of money. And it passed with, and it now requires 10 votes to amend the mayor's budget.
Okay. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that. So, the conversation for people who weren't at the budget meeting, I personally looked at the line items that they were looking at and wanted to see what we could do for them. And the two line items that they didn't have any sort of plan for, that they had pulled out of their budget, was the paras and the school counselor, which still keeps us at 3%, but allows us to give them a little bit more support. Oh, and, I'm sorry, we actually voted to put that in the contingency, so the money wouldn't be used unless we hire those people. So, it'll go into the same contingency with the $200,000 for the other paras.
Alderman Jettie.
Just a point of clarification, didn't, didn't the mayor add something for the, the grant writer?
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, but the mayor added to his budget. We allowed that to go through, but we didn't alter the mayor's budget. That's part of the mayor's budget, so we don't need to vote on that separately.
Okay.
Correct? Yeah, you do, but as long as it's captured in this amendment, you'll be fine. It is.
Alderman Clay.
Yeah, I, while I want to give the school as much as we possibly can, I have concerns that we could actually hire two skill para, two school paras, a school counselor for 65K, and it would not include any of the, yeah, any of the benefits. And then who pays for the benefits? And I have the same issue with the contingency plan and this, that if we add to their budget, does that mean next year their budget is at least $265,000 more, because we can't ask these people to leave their jobs? Just a concern that, having to bring everything forward, I know this is this year's budget, but we have to think forward, so.
Alderman Kelly.
I believe, and I'll ask Alderman Dowd to back me up, that the discussion came up as well in budget, and we were told that, we put this aside, they're, they're going to have to handle the budget part, the benefit part of it, including the $200,000. And I think that the paras are part-time that are in there, and this was exactly what they brought to us. There was a memo that was brought to us after we met with them that was sent through from Sue Lovering, and that's where I got the numbers from, so I trust that they know what, they would pay somebody for those jobs.
Alderman Clay.
Again, I, I'm looking forward, and I, I understand that they're going to have to take the cost of the benefits within, and part-time doesn't have the same benefit. I do, I do respect that, and I do understand that, but I'm still looking at the $200,000 and so on, that next year they're going to have these bodies. And whether they pay for them, the city pays for them, or however it's worked, I'm just a little worried about the following year.
May I respond? Alderman Kelly.
I, no, I apologize. I, I hear your concerns, but when they were sitting here, I asked them specifically, you know, what, what is really on your mind? And I believe Board of, the Board President said, you know, I'd love, I'd love to hire 12 paras, so the need is there, whether we fund it this year or next year. And these are things, and this is a thing I brought up in our meeting, that they need to start thinking about hiring now. So, it's not something we can, oh, maybe we'll have some contingency later on and give them to, they have to hire them this summer for the fall.
Alderman Clemmons, and then Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Kelly did a great job on, on this, because I think, you know, when you look at what we're, or what's being proposed here, it's another school psychologist in a time when, you know, kids are facing a lot of things at, at home. We're a growing city. We're having more problems. And of course, paraprofessionals go right in hand with that. You're talking about, on the average, $300,000 house, $3. $3 more a year is what we're asking people to pay for these positions. I don't think it's too much to ask.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just so we're, stick at the moment to the amendment. The 200K and the 65K will be in contingency. It is part of the budget, if it gets approved, and therefore will become part of the school budget when they come up with a person to hire, and they come to us and ask us to release the money from contingency to do that hire. But as far as the entire budget, city budget, it's in there now. Well, if it's in there, if we pass the amendment and pass the budget. And so, another thing I wanted to point out is, after we had our meeting, and you'll recall at the budget meeting, I asked the CFO what the percentage increase was, and he said 3%. I went to see him the very next day or the day after. We sat down with a spreadsheet. It's actually 2.997. So, it is under 3, for those that were concerned. I know that's not a heck of a lot under, but when I asked about the other changes, you'd have to do a lot more to get it any lower anyway, so, but it's 2.997. And right now, we're looking at the amended budget, so what we're voting on is the 65K to put in contingency to allow the school department to hire what they can in the areas of para or...
Counselor. School counselor.
Yes. So, that's what we're voting on right now, the amendment.
Correct. Alderman Lopez.
So, Southern New Hampshire has, according to National Institute of Mental Health, one of the highest suicide rates in the country. We have all kinds of national dialogue about school shootings, about violence in schools, about bullying. Not only does that happen in schools, but every time we have it in the national media, then kids are seeing that, they're viewing it, they're having trouble understanding what to do with it. This city is going through an SUD crisis. Many of these children have experienced, you know, friends, families, uncles, aunts, parents, you know, suffering from substance use disorders. We have recently had a pretty contentious discussion over smoking in schools and the difficulties that entails. And I know that we're not in the top four or five when it comes to college placement. These are all things that a school counselor would be working on. I think our school counselors are, their caseloads are like three or four times what is recommended, according to the School Counseling Association. I think they're overworked and stretched too thin, and I think they're, this is, these are more than bodies. These are people who are force multipliers when it comes to how our kids are able to navigate the school system. Kids who are, who are, have positive mental health can do better in school, they can score higher on tests, they can interact better with their peers. So, I think the presentation and the proposal being made here is a bargain. It's not a huge surge or increase. It's a recognition that our school population needs more than it's getting right now, and if that means in future years we have to continue to revisit the issue, I think we should. I think that needs to be a major part of the future budget's, you know, focus areas, is how is our school, how are our schools meeting the expectations that they have? It ties directly back to tax value, quality of community. Every time we end up in number one best place to live on whatever app of the week is doing it, it's always related back to education and our, and school safety. So, I'm in favor of that. I'm also conscious of an ever-expanding diverse world. We're a welcoming city, and the need for paraprofessionals to help people who have cognitive or behavioral challenges or cultural challenges. I think this is a very good reason to approve a small amount more in the budget.
Alderman Gethright.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor. I think you've done an exceptional job with the budget and preparing the budget for everyone. As I remember, recall with the budget that the school came back with, they did get, or they agreed to what was presented by the mayor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, mind you, I realize that there's a lot of things happening in the school department here, and I think that we, we are, you know, I'm not saying baby steps, but I do believe that it takes time to get things in order, and it's not going to be done overnight in any situation. And I say that because I'm not willing to go to 2.997 tax for the city. We have a lot of changes going on in the city, assessing, the whole nine yards, the tax change. I do believe that 2.7, I really don't even want to be there, to be honest with you, but I guess I could live with 2.7, and I believe my constituents could too, as well. But the 2.997 or 3.0, whatever it might be, I would not be voting for that.
Alderman Dowd, and then I'll get on this side.
Yeah, I just want to make a correction. The, the budget that was submitted by the school department got a bottom-line cut from the mayor for $380,000.
Well, then I think, I think they voted again then, and they, their original budget was higher, then I went over there, we talked about it, they reduced their request to the...
But the $380,000 was in the budget book.
So, maybe it was in the budget book. But they, they amended their request, so you could take that either way, I think.
Alderman Clemmons.
I kind of look at that argument like, if, if you have a child and he wants to buy the king-size candy bar, but you tell him no, you can't buy the king-size candy bar, but you can buy the regular one, then, okay, well, I'd rather have a candy bar than no candy bar, right? So, it's kind of like that, that cut that was done, was done so because we had to fit into this 3% goal. And I think it was done very well, and, you know, it was a good budget that was presented, but it's missing, it's missing a few things. It's off by a little bit. 3%, I don't think is, to me, I don't think is going to work. And what's being presented in front of us right now, the amendment that is actually under that, that 3%, and we're talking about, on an, an average house, the average household of $300,000, which that's the average household in this city, we're talking about $3 more a year. Three, three bucks. I, I, I don't understand the opposition. I just, I just don't. If three, if, if, if there's a taxpayer out there that, that that $3 is going to be the difference between them keeping their house and losing their house, then they have a lot bigger problems. There's bigger problems out there with, for them.
Alderman Melissa Goya, and then Alderman Kelly, and then I'll get back on this side.
I am going to support this. I think that if you look at what's happening in communities and in schools today, we're aware of trauma that kids are coming to school with, and we're aware of the importance of children having an opportunity to talk about what's going on and to form relationships. I think since Alderman Dowd and I were on the school board years ago together, we've, and Alderman Clemmons' father and I were on the school board together, we have been talking about the need for counselors and even social workers in the schools. And I'm not talking about just the high schools, I'm talking about the early prevention piece of having them available to our elementary schoolers. So, I am going to support this. I think that the benefit to the community, it can't even be measured in terms of value. So, I will support this.
Alderman Kelly.
Talking a lot tonight, sorry. We talked through your concerns about, you know, the taxes and, and raising them, and nobody wants to raise taxes. We all live here, we all pay taxes here. I've been on the Budget Committee for two years in a row, which is pales in comparison to a lot of people around this horseshoe, but every year we consistently hear from every department that they are underfunded or level-funded. The Fire Department has not had a increase other than wages for 14 years. So, I think part of the budget, and is listening to them, hearing what they're saying, trying to keep that in a reasonable place for everybody, but also deciding year to year, what things can we invest in and keep going, because we can't, we can't consistently stay at this level. As our population grows, as our needs grow, we haven't for a long time been able to continually make sure that people are at full force or have the, the resources that they need. So, I, I advocate for the school, because I have a school, a daughter in the school, she has a para that she works with. I've seen a lot of young families who have left the district and said, because it was the school not having enough resources, those types of things. And that's my own personal experience, but I think that it's real, and I think that we have to step up and invest, and $3 a household is, is not a lot.
Alderman Clay.
I, I agree. $3 a household is not a lot, but I don't want the public to think that their tax bill's only going to go up $3. Their tax bill's going to go up a little bit more, because it's a little less than 3%. That's what it's going to go up. But I agree. The only difference is the $3. And I'm not disagreeing with this $65,000. I came in saying, probably not, but I'm, I am, I am listening. I, I do think, and as a person who's been playing crossing guard for the past couple weeks, because we're down six and a half crossing guards, I understand that the school has its, has its issues. They're not down that because they can't afford it, they're down that because they can't hire anybody. But I do understand that there's, there are some, some big issues within, within the school and so on. And I'm not saying that I, I will say no to this, but I am concerned that we, we're just doing here and there. My hopes is that next year, that the state passes the budget and we see some increased funds in the second year of that biennial budget. But in the meantime, I do have, I do have some issues with nickel and dime and so on, but I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, we probably first thought at the end of the budget and had discussions with the mayor and others, we set a goal of trying to keep the tax rate under 3%, because two things were killing us. One was the 11%, the $3 million increase in health insurance, because we pay a lot more than that, but it's a $3 million increase. That's normally the increase in the entire budget, just about. And the other thing is the lack of state funding. And the other thing is the lack of state funding. Not saying anything against any of the reps here, because I know they all support increased funding. Hopefully, from what I've read, is a chance that we'll be getting more state help, and things might be better. We're also, we have city employees that are pursuing, reducing the $3 million health impact, so that bodes well, perhaps, for next year. I supported the, the paras, because as the liaison to the Board of Education, and, and having close contact with a lot of teachers and people that work in the school district, who, including people that have my ear quite closely, like my daughter. They're woefully short of paras. Two is not going to even put a dent in it. But as long as it stayed under 3%, and we could add two paras, I was okay with it, that's why I went and checked on just exactly where we were, the three-digit level. And so I'm going to support this, and, and I think that, you know, let's work on the amendment, and then we'll have to work on the entire budget, so as amended.
Alderman Jettie.
I, I just want to clarify that, that the, the amended budget that we're voting on includes, does it include not only the, the paras that Alderman Kelly's talking about, but the, the ELL teachers that the mayor talked about?
That's in contingency, Alderman Jettie. $200,000 in contingency for that purpose.
So this amended budget includes that?
Absolutely.
It does.
Okay.
Alderman Tenza.
Just a point of clarification with that, that $200,000 is in the mayor's budget, which only requires a majority of the board to pass, whereas the additional $65,000 is in the, is, is, right, is in the amendment which requires 10, 10 votes from the board.
The amendment only requires eight. The, if that passes, then the budget will require 10.
Okay. And so if I may just follow up with that, too, and, and, so, I mean, I supported the amendment to committee, and I'm going to support the amendment here tonight as well. I think that the, the paras are a group of employees in our city that don't get the, the credit that they deserve. We don't compensate them for, for the work that they do, the difficult work that they do. And I'm, I'm not sure that we appreciate how much they mean to, to the schools for, for a lot of reasons. I've heard from teachers that this has been a particular, particularly tough year for, for them, for a lot of reasons, but I think that having more support in, in the schools will, will certainly help not only them, it's going to help other kids in the classroom be able to, to learn as well and thrive. So I'm supportive of this, and I hope it passes the board.
Thank you. I have a question, if anyone can answer it. This $65,000 would fund two paras and a part-time counselor? Alderman Kelly.
The way I understood it was a full-time counselor. Hold on one second, I'm trying to pull up the document. Because I remember when we asked for the suggested changes, it says two para educators and a social worker counselor, so my understanding was that it was a full-time.
Okay, so there has been discussion about the paras, their positions open now that they can't fill. Is that what I'm hearing? Alderman Kelly.
Yeah, and I, and actually, that was brought up at budget. That was one of the reasons why we put it in contingency, so if they are unable to fill those positions, the money goes back to the general fund.
Very good, and I'm going to support that, too. Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment. Alderman Dow.
Just one other point, just so people are aware, paras don't get paid very much money.
That's an understatement.
To say the least.
Okay, so the motion before us is to, to amend R. 19123 by replacing it with the proposed amendments made at the Budget Committee by roll call. Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 13 yays. And that motion carries? So we are... Alderman Dow.
It was coming back. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 19123 as amended by roll call, and like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Okay, so now, again, the, with the $65,000 added, it's under 3%. Yes, a fraction under 3%, but in a budget of the size that we're talking about, a small percentage is a lot of, a lot of money. So it, it really, in the Budget Committee, just to refresh for people who weren't there, we had an amendment suggested by Alderman Clemmons, and I actually applaud him for bringing that forward, but it involved $113,000 for the police department and $100,000 for the fire department. I believe that amount. And, believe me, it, it bothers me that we're not able to come up with that funding and stay under 3%. It bothered me so much that the next day, again, I had conversations with the, the new chief of police, or I, soon-to-be new police chief, and the deputy, and the, the fire chief and the deputy, and, and while they would love to have that money, they had, they understand, they fully understand where we're at, and are, can live with the budget as it stands in this amendment, in the amended budget. So to me, if they're willing to live with it and understand why we need to try and reduce the tax impact to the taxpayers of the city of Nashville, given the constraints that drove the budget to that level, I'm fine with recommending approval.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to amend the budget by adding $113,000 to the bottom line of the police department, and $100,000 to the bottom line of the fire department, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So the reason that I'm proposing this is because during the Budget Committee, we had the police chief, so I'll address the police department first, that section of my motion first. We had the police chief come and tell us that basically they weren't going to be able to make payroll unless they had that $113,000 in the budget. And, or at least they wouldn't be able to hire, or do, do the hiring that really a city that, you know, is growing the way that we are should be hiring. So I am proposing that we put that money back into the budget for that reason. Also, at the Budget Committee, the fire chief brought up to us the fact that there is a problem where businesses are being, there, there's lengthy waits to get inspections done, permits processed, because we need a new fire inspector. We need, that, that, that that was a position that had been cut years ago, and was something that they wanted to add on to their budget. And they actually wanted to add two. Now, I understand the fact that, of course, they can live within those, the budget that we give them. Any department would be able to live within the budget that we gave them, because that was, that is their obligation. However, we, we should take into account the fact that, and this is something that Nashville hasn't experienced in a long time, is the fact that the city's actually, the population of this city is growing. So between 1995 and 2015, the population in Nashville was stagnant. So the fact that we were under the spending cap and all that was really a, you know, that's how we were able to maintain these services, is the fact that, you know, the city really never grew in population size. So you could have a police force that was the same size as it was back in 1995, in 2015. You could have a fire department that was the same size as it was in 1995, in 2015. Now the city's growing, we're almost at 90,000 people, and we're going to continue to grow. And so we need to make the investments, and we need to say, what are the things that we need to do as a city to help our departments manage that growth? One of the things that we can do is certainly not short-change the police department and make sure that they're able to hire more police officers. And so I think by adding that $113,000, we achieve that. Secondly, the fire department, particularly the inspectors' positions, we, this, we're a growing city. So the fact that the population is growing means that there are more permits, there are more things to inspect, there are more businesses that are going to be moving in to the city, and that means we have to keep up with the pace of, of that, and put back in to the budget, the inspector. So I believe, along with the amendment that we just passed, if we were to add what I am proposing here, in total, over the, what the mayor proposed, we would be talking a total of a $9 increase. So $3 from the proposal from Alderman Kelly, and $6 from this proposal. That's $3 for the police, that's $3 for the fire department, that's $3 for the school department, on the average $300,000 home. I don't think that that is too much to ask our citizens either. For a budget that the police are going to be able to increase their presence in this city to accommodate our growing population, I think that's something that our citizens would want for an extra $3 on their taxes. And having an extra fire inspector, I think, is something that our business community would want, particularly because we're having slowdowns in that area of getting these permits issued, and that's been going on for a very long time. And it's an issue that we can solve for, again, $3 over what the mayor has proposed. So I think, overall, are we going over 3% with these proposals? Yes, absolutely. But what are we getting out of it? Well, we're getting a fully-complimented police department, and we're getting a fire department that is better suited to meet the needs of a growing city. Now, we can say, you know, we'll put this off till next year, maybe we'll do this next year, but you know, one of the things that my friends over in the fire department say year after year is, that they're always told it's, it's not a good year. And they've been told that for 14 years. When is it a good year? Because, you know, in, in, in 2006, it wasn't a good year, then the economy tanked in 2008 and '09, that wasn't a good year. The economy's better in 2016, '17, '18, and that's not a good year. When is it a good year? When is it a good time? When are we going to, when are we going to fight for the people that fight for us? Well, that, that's what this amendment is, and I hope that you will join me in supporting it, because again, we already gave three extra dollars to the school department, I think we can give another six to the police and the fire.
My two cents, Alderman Clemmons. We will do that when the state stops passing costs down to us. That's my, my opinion. Alderman Cle.
Yes, and I, I echo those words, and I think it's more than $3, $3, $3. I think it's probably in total closer to, to $12, but putting 12 or even more, but putting that aside, the, the property owners that are taking the biggest hit these days are the smaller homeowners and the condos. I can tell you, for instance, mine went up 9% without this, just because of the reassessment and so on. So we're not just looking at $3, and $6, and $9, or $12. We're looking at a total of really increasing it. But getting to the police department's $113,000, I sat right next to Chief Lavoy when he said it, and one of the things that he said, and I think Alderman Kelly actually spoke to that, was that they've never been up to compliment because they couldn't hire. They're changing their new hiring practices with coming with something on a little bit different. I'd like to see how those hiring practices go before we, you know, add $113,000. And I agree with you, I'd love to see more police presence, but if they can't hire, then this has been an issue to begin with. Maybe with this new practice, they'll be able to hire. As far as the, the fire department's concerned, I agree, it would be nice to have more inspectors. But I also believe that, excuse me, Chief Rhodes made a comment about he wasn't going to be asking for anything this year, but he would definitely be coming back next year. And to what President Wiltshire had mentioned, it is time for the state to stop passing all that, that down to us. And based on this year's hopeful budget, we're looking at maybe a 3.7 in municipal aid and $5 million in school funding, granted it'll come in the second, and maybe that's the year that we can do it. So maybe that is the right year and the good year. And I agree with you, they're hearing it time after time after time, and I speak to firemen all the time also, and it is killing me inside, I feel my blood pressure going up just even mentioning that I can't support this, but I, I can't. I just can't keep nickel and diming. It was one thing to do, as you put into $3, but not another $3, $3, $3, because their taxes have not just gone up $3. They're going to go up whatever this 3% is, and then whatever the assessment did, so I just can't do that to them.
Alderman Gathright.
Nashville just received four new officers, so, and then what Alderman Cle was referring to was their training packets. What they're doing are they're hiring police officers that have already been trained to a certain degree, so that's why they could come in where they did come in, so.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I thank Alderman Clemmons for bringing this forward, but I really can't support it, particularly looking at the whole picture. I agree with Alderman Wiltshire, that the state needs to stop knocking everything back down. You've got to remember, they, they went from 35% and the pension system is paying, to 30% down to, what, 20% down to practically nothing. And the city, they never changed the law, half-masted. They didn't change the law, they made, oh, well, we're going to keep the rules the same, it's the city you pay for. And we did, and we have to now, today. And some of these things, I mean, you know, taxpayers, you want to vote for a spending cap, you've got to get what you pay for. Some of these positions on the fire department that were cut, particularly the fire inspector, was cut during Bernie Streeter administration. There's been other positions of, they're missing a mechanic, they're, they're missing a lineman for the electrical division, they're missing a lot of things. And where did all those things go? There was no nuclear attack in the city of Nashville, folks. Where did those jobs vaporized? It got vaporized with the spending cap and out of this particular chamber, that we didn't give enough money for them to operate. I hope those days are gone, but I'm not going to make up 25 years of fiscal foolishness in one year. We can't, though we really, probably good, but we can't. Maybe if we change our attitude and get some decent people into this chamber that are progressive in thinking and looking, and they're going to come up. With a city budget of 3%, I think the people of the city can take into account that the mayor and this board sharpened our pencils, and we came up with something that was a darn good budget, that was practical. And keep in mind, we went through something that the state also gave us down our bowling alley, was a reassessment that some people went through. So there was a lot of things that came in and affected us, and I think we did good. But again, I, you know... But again, I, you know, I think now we have some other labor groups coming up for contracts. One of them is the firemen. And the firefighters aren't doing the extra duties. I know the mechanics are working harder with only a limited amount of men to fix those trucks, and they get used an awful lot. You've got engine companies that are doing close to 3,000, 2,000, 2,000 to 3,000 runs a year for an engine company. That's a lot of work. They're not sleeping, folks, you know, when you average out the call per day volume. So these things need to be addressed, and maybe we should reward them for their good work as it comes down to. But I think if we take the budget methodically and slow and look, and then in the future, Sarah Marshon said with the grant writer, that they're going to look into a new study, particularly with the fire department, that I hope we listen to. And, because that's going to come in with clear identification, what position's going to need to be refilled, filled and put the importance upon that. So I use caution, I respect the motion before us, I thank the Alderman for putting, again, putting the motion before us, but in prudence, I think staying underneath 3% I think is enough for the taxpayers to chew at this particular time, and then we could look at another crack in future budgets and budgets. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Just a couple of things, again, I talked to both the police and the fire chiefs. The one thing that Chief Lavoy took issue with over the years was they managed their budget and stayed within the budget by managing attrition. At the end of the year, they didn't hire somebody to make ends meet till the end of the budget. They also didn't have as big a problem with that because on a few times when they went out and tests, got 100, 150 people take the test, zero qualified to become a police officer. So they had an issue of hiring. That's why the police commissioners in the police department decided to change their modus operandi on hiring and go out and hire people from other forces. They tended not to do that in the past. They tried to get new officers and train them into the way they wanted them trained. Other departments did that. And that's why Nashville loses police officers to other cities and state police and occasionally FBI, and we train them well. So in, in, in talking to the police department, they may have to budget that same way at the end of the year through attrition to make their ends meet. If they have a major event in the year and they have a budget issue with it, like that issue they had in Manchester, they will have to come back to us and ask for more money. If they don't, they don't. But that would be addressed downstream. The other thing is, Chief Rhodes actually called me and said, he didn't want anybody on the Board of Aldermen to get the idea that any business was delayed in being inspected because they're short a person. Their people worked the extra hours, the overtime, and they went out and made sure that these people were inspected, and they will still do that.
Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Yes, thank you. Chief Rhodes and I also had a couple of conversations about the budget, and my impression is the same as Alderman Dowd's. And two fire marshals going out and doing inspections, I had conversation, conversations with two individuals who are involved in development, and they were talking about someone from the fire marshal's office coming out, and they said, oh, well, how did that go? You know, how long did you have to wait? I know they're really busy. And both individuals said, oh, no problem, they came out and it got done. And I appreciate the fact that they're working extra hours to get that done. I also appreciate the fact that all of our department heads and division heads have a fine balancing routine that we're all engaging in. And I think that we need to be very careful to make sure we're, we keep the big picture in front of us, because at the end of the day, when businesses and families decide to locate here, they're looking at the big picture, and everyone has their own priority, just like every division head has within the city. So, you know, thinking about what our tax rate is and is it something that is manageable, whatever that is, knowing manageable means different things to different people. And yet trying to provide services that our constituents are happy with, I mean, I would tell you that probably DPW could use a few more people too, especially when you look at overtime in the winter with plowing. And I know lots of people who say, why don't they have more plows on the road? And why aren't they out more often? And it's like, we've got a finite set of people and they do have to sleep. So I think we could look across the city and look at where we need additional resources in terms of bodies. But I do think we, we need to look at some of the areas that we've mentioned this year and, and aren't able to address, and just make sure that we look at those first next year and, and see where the priorities are and balance out how we are moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I guess respond to a couple of things. I understand that, you know, that, I don't want to make anybody think that I don't understand the fact that, you know, we have inspectors and they, in the fire department, and that, yes, they address the businesses' needs, of course they do, but they're overworked. They're overworked. Do you know what it's like to work in a place that's overworked, where you're overworked? It's not a good environment. And, you know, I, I, you know, we, we can argue and back and forth all day. I personally believe that what the chief told me, both of them, they were here, it was in a public session, these were the needs that they addressed. I have always said that I would never be religious to a arbitrary number as far as where we can go for the budget. And I used to say that about the spending cap. You know, we'd come up with the, as, as former Alderman Tebow likes to say, we'd come up with the number, what is the number that we're, we have to keep under. Saying it's 3% is really no different than that. It's the same thing, just a different number. And I, I personally don't look at budgets that way. When I sit on the budget committee and I look at different things, I look at needs. And I understand we need to be prudent. I think this budget is prudent, I think these amendments are prudent, because they, they don't go fixing the spending cap problems overnight. They don't. It's taking it one step at a time, but it's taking it just a little bit further so that we can address the fact that we are a growing city. But again, I'm going to support the amendment, obviously, and should the amendment not pass, I might as well explain this now, I'm going to vote no for the budget, because again, I can't vote for a budget that doesn't address all of the needs that I feel are important or doesn't fully fund all of our departments the way they should be funded. So just want to put that out there.
Further discussion on the amendment. Alderman Cle.
I just want to make one, one comment. We are an aging city, and we're trying to find young people to come in, and young people buy smaller homes. Those were the ones that had the biggest assessments, so they're, they're going to hit the highest taxes. Our elderly, many of them are on fixed income. I can tell you, I'm on a fixed income. So every dollar counts, every percentage counts, and I agree with you, 3% just seems like an arbitrary number, but I think it's something that the public feels more comfortable with. They would probably prefer the 1.6% and, you know, be damned with the health care. But that's kind of how they're feeling, because they're looking at their pocketbooks. But I think keeping it under 3% is good faith to our residents, and, and yes, it is an arbitrary number, but it's something. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So one of my earliest memories of confusion and then later understanding was actually Alderman Clemmons voting against the budget because of the spending cap, and he explained that he would stick to his principles and he felt that the spending cap was an arbitrary number. And I think one of the, the most important points made in that discussion when we had it was that, as Aldermen, it's our job to do this, to have the discussion back and forth, to figure out budget items and what appropriate needs can be met and which ones need to be looked at and approached strategically. I think we have been fair to both the fire and the police department. Both are highly performing departments, they're recognized regionally as leaders. There have been new fire trucks, there have been increases in individual compensation and the number of dispatch agents. And that's well-earned, too. Our fire department has done amazing work with not only the safe station program, but in maintaining its response time to different fires and emergencies. And they are recognized as a regional training leader. Same as for our police, the entire state of New Hampshire is, is in the grips of what was being called the opioid crisis at the time, and Nashville is holding its own and is making arrests when it needs to. Its police department is not so hurried that they can't take the time to talk to children. I just saw intervention happening on Canal Street a couple of days ago, where I was impressed that the officers were entertaining children and family members while the officer was interviewing a, a parent, so as to not create a negative impression. You know, they take the time to hand out stickers, to play basketball in the, in the community, to do things that matter, because they're, they're not just in it for the job, they're doing an outstanding job. And I think we also recognized, much too late, that they needed infrastructure improvements too, and that's something that we're tackling too. So I think we are recognizing the needs of the fire department and the police department. I do agree with Alderman Clemmons with regards to an arbitrary number guiding our decisions, but I think this number, this 3% was, was conceived because of the state issues that were brought up earlier, the insurance and, and the need for an assessment. And both of those conditions had to come into play to impact our budget. And the 3% was created, and it wasn't, it definitely didn't go unchallenged. Alderman Dowd went and made absolutely sure we were able to meet need when we saw it, while at the same time staying under a goal. I think that's good budgeting, I think the discussion here has been very productive. We haven't all agreed 100% on any particular point, but I mean, it's, we're politicians, there's a number of us for a reason, and it's not just pick a number and then go for it. There has to be this discussion, there has to be this agreement. So I appreciate what Alderman Clemmons is trying to do. I won't support an additional amendment, but I do want to voice my support for his intent.
I agree, Alderman Lopez, I think his intent is great. However, I can't support it either. Further discussion on the amendment to add $100,000 to the fire department and $113,000 to the police department. Further discussion on that amendment. Seeing none?
Can I ask for a roll call?
Roll call. Clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
No.
We have one yes and 13 nays.
Motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 19123, as amended. Further discussion on that. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 13 yays and one nay.
And that motion carries. Resolution 19123 is duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution 19-136, authorizing the formation of two voluntary nonprofit corporations under RSA 162-G for the Performing Arts Center.
Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Yes, for final passage of R. 19136.
Motion before us is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-141, relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department 194 contingency, Account 70100, general contingency, to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, Accounting Classification 56, outside agencies, for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashville Association for the Elderly.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 19-141.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19141. Discussion on that motion. Seeing, Alderman Karen.
Thank you. I just, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Senior Center, we really appreciate the Alderman contributing this $25,000 to the center. As you know, it is restricted for infrastructure maintenance only and repairs to the building as needed. We do know that the building belongs to the city, but we try to keep it in good shape for the 1,500 seniors that utilize it along with other people. So again, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your support.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19141. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-145, authorizing the city of Nashville to enter into an agreement for emergency ambulance services with American Medical Response, Inc.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 19-145.
Motion before us is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Cle.
Yes, I just want to clarify, this does include the dispatch, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor says yes.
To pay for the dispatching and so on, so that is all part of this, this contract then? Yes, thank you so much.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance 19-044, amending the Board of Aldermen compensation ordinance.
Alderman Laws.
I move to amend 01944 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made by the Personnel Administration Affairs Committee, and I could just speak to it real quick.
Alderman Laws.
So this is just to add maternity leave as an acceptable reason for Aldermen to miss time in the Oval, and Alderman Clemmons had the prevalent suggestion to amend it to add paternity leave as well. So we pass that. That's what this amendment is.
Alderman Kelly.
It also includes adoption.
Thank you.
Which I thought was very progressive, so thank you.
Okay, so the motion before us is to amend Ordinance 19044 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made at the Personnel Committee. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries. Alderman Laws.
I'd like to move for final passage of 01944 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries.
Second reading of Ordinance 19-045, updating the financial standards for the city welfare's guidelines.
Alderman Gathright.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of Ordinance 19-045.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution, I mean, Ordinance 19045. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 19-147, authorizing purchase and sale of city land at 21 Pine Street, MAP 77, Lot 17, and land of Public Service Company of New Hampshire, due of business as EverSource Energy at 21 Pine Street, MAP 77, Lot 17. as EverSource Energy at 3 Pine Street Extension, MAP 77, Lot 2A.
Given its additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Committee on Infrastructure, the Nashua City Planning Board, and the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-148 amending the authorization for the sale of land on Bridge Street and Sanders Street.
Additional sponsors? Seeing none, given its first reading, I'll assign this to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Nashua City Planning Board.
First reading Resolution 19-149 changing the purpose of up to $235,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the Road and Traffic Improvements Project on Amber Street between Sharon Avenue and Diesel Road to pay costs for paving a portion of Pine Hill Road and various streets in the neighborhood if funds remain.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gathwright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Malisi Gola, Alderman Tenza. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of Resolution 19-150 authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a license agreement for a parking area off Artillery Lane, Nashua, budding MAP 63, Lot 45.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Malisi Gola. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Public Works. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance 19-047 establishing an animal and dog park advisory committee.
Additional sponsors?
Outback.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisi Gola. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment. We have one person signed up, Lori Ordolano. If you'd please give your name and address for the record.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to address the issue of uniformity and how important it is in the assessing office to have data capture be uniform. And the office has some procedures in place. They're working on policies, but they've had some longstanding procedures that allow them to capture their data with uniformity. If a property card is being changed, an assessor prints a card in its current form, takes it to the property, pencil marks or makes the appropriate changes on the card. It comes back to the office, is either changed in the data system, the Patriot system, AssessPro, by the assessor or by a clerical staff member. The new card is printed, stapled to the old card. It's reviewed by the assessor to make certain all the data is correct and it's filed. It's a system that actually works well. And if it's used by everyone, it's a great system. But what you find is there's a lack of uniformity in there and not everyone is following the rules. And so, if you don't have uniformity, you don't have equity and fairness in your assessments. It's that simple and it's that important. You received a letter that was read into the record by Ms. Kleiner regarding a clarification to a memo I sent to the Board. And I would like to make note of misinformation she has provided you. She stated in this letter that AssessPro does not capture all of the work or all of the properties visited by an assessor. It only indicates that during a certain time period, the assessor used AssessPro to make corrections with respect to the listed property. An assessor typically performs a great deal more work and makes a great deal more property visits than are captured on this report. And she gives the example that they might be investigating a charitable exemption where the assessor needs to evaluate if the building is being used for a qualified charitable purpose. This would not warrant a change to the property card and is not captured in the report. In fact, that's not true. There are, in this report that was given to me, three exemptions that were noted in April that this assessor went to. And all exemptions, whether they are religious or charitable exemptions, come in in a form yearly. They have to be submitted to the assessor's office. And it's the clerical staff that handles those forms. They take those forms and they look at every charity or tax-exempt business and they review them. And a lot of them are repeats. They're just coming back and filling out their paperwork every year, asking for their exemption, putting it on the record. And there's no need for an assessor to go visit. So, it's the clerical staff that actually assigns the assessor the responsibility to go check these properties. Many of them are not checked, but when the clerical person receives an A9 or an exemption form for a new exemption that hasn't existed before, maybe an exemption that has had a building permit, they got to get out there and check the permit for the exemption, maybe a property that is no longer going to be an exemption, they're going to go out to it and look at the property card and make certain that it's all up to date for tax purposes. Those get assigned. And in fact, our assessor that we're looking at here, under a little bit of scrutiny, was assigned three exemption properties to go to. The Y was one. That's an exemption property. Went out there because the new building opened. Was asked by the clerical staff, please go to the Y on Northeastern Boulevard and check out that new property. 25 Cornell Road, which is right up by me, is a facility that was going to be used as a parsonage for Tabernacle Church over in Witchfield. It had not been a parsonage before, so the clerical staff said to the assessor, go out and check on that ranch-style home as a parsonage. The third one was 41 and 43 Chandler Street, which had been bought out. That's the big, beautiful church up on Chandler Street that was closed for a while. Catholic church transferred a couple of times. It's now under new ownership. It's got a big building permit. It's got a building next to it, a ranch that's used as a parsonage. Those properties needed to be checked because there are permits out on them. And in fact, the clerical staff wrote a letter, Religious Exemptions, that went to the Board of Assessors on the 29th of April, explaining in this letter very clearly, the property at 43 Chandler Street has been used on the A9 form submitted as a rectory and is a ranch-style house assessed at 234. This has been exempt and an exemption is being requested for 2019. According to commercial assessor Greg Turges, at the time of his inspection of the property last Friday, no one answered the door, but he said that it appeared as if it was occupied. Then we went to the property at 41 Chandler Street, two structures. Mr. Turges inspected this property. He reported it. Okay, these are exemption properties and they are, in fact, in the AssessPro report. She is not recognizing that these exemption properties are captured. And you have to ask yourselves, when she makes note in her letter, that there's a lot of other work assessors do that maybe is not documented in AssessPro, we need to be very, very concerned. Because I will tell you, there is never a reason for an assessor to be out at someone's property, either on it, looking at it, inspecting it externally or internally, and not be documenting it on the property card. First of all, you shouldn't want your people on somebody's property where it's not documented. But that uniformity in documentation is what's so important on tracking where we are. So, every time, now, if the assessor's going to go out to do drive-bys, which really shouldn't happen often at all and doesn't typically, the assessor's going to do drive-bys, that should be noted. KRT noted on almost all of the 1401 residential accounts, there's a note on almost everyone's property card that says field review. That was their drive-by. They didn't really come into your property and do an external inspection or a listed measure. But AssessPro has a lot of codes, a lot of code names for you to go in and document exactly what you're doing when you look at a property. It's always documented. Now, when I saw this letter, which was just in the last day, I said, hmm, am I wrong? Did I really give the wrong information? Well, let me look at the residential assessors that went out to, you know, 79 properties in April. Well, when I look at that AssessPro report she gave me, excuse me, it was 89 properties they went to. When I added up the properties, it came out to 92. That's pretty accurate, okay? They missed three that they should have expensed, but they didn't overcharge and pretty much, it's a pretty accurate report. When I look at the other commercial assessor and the properties that he went to versus the expense report, it's off by a couple of properties, pretty accurate. Some of them, because he was at a building that had six units that he was inspecting in the same building, it's not six trips. It appears six times because it's unit 12, unit 14, unit 16, unit 18, but you're literally going door-to-door looking at new properties. And that's how it's done. It's pretty darn accurate. But when I look at another assessor report and I'm still trying to find 500 or 600 miles, that's when I see a red flag. And if Ms. Kleiner is saying this assessor is driven around, he's just driving around and you don't realize, he's doing a lot of work, but none of it's documented, then I want to ask you to ask your administration, how do we monitor fraud, waste, and mismanagement if we allow this to go on? How do you know you don't have a fraud, waste, and mismanagement process? If you're allowing this to happen and there's no documentation? That's never supposed to happen. And so, the other thing she notes in here is that they're only doing a peer review process in there. Mr. Turges isn't operating as a supervisor at all. I disagree with that for a number of reasons. She's not down there daily, but they operate on peer review. Now, the two residential assessors are doing peer review work. That's very apparent to me, looking at the logs and the data and everything. But the commercial assessors are not. And I want to know why. The most experienced assessor in there is a certified appraiser and has done probably 20 years of commercial assessing, which is a different beast from residential. You have different income statements and different approaches to take to value commercial properties. And they're trickier and more difficult to do because you don't have a lot of data in a single category sometimes to assess these properties. So, they're unique creatures. So, we have one commercial assessor that has 20 years of experience and is a licensed appraiser. Our other commercial assessor in question here has only been at it three years and does not have a lot of experience. Why is there no peer review going on here? Why isn't the experienced one doing the peer review? What is happening here? I think I have an answer to that, but I'm not going to share that right now. Let's see what the administration says. But that is not happening. And that's a very good question, why we don't do that monitoring. So, now, when I looked at, again, Ms. Kleiner's letter, I thought to myself, well, maybe I don't understand what, maybe I missed what these assessors are doing. So, I went back to the presentation that was given to you on the 30th. And there's, what, three pages in here on what does an assessor do? What is their primary work? What are they doing? And I went back and read this. And the primary work is permits, abatements, data capture from permits not collected, and exemptions, the very things I'm talking about right here, that I am finding trapped in the data. So, I'm trying to say, well, did I miss something? Am I not seeing this clearly? But that report seems pretty detailed. Now, I just received today from a right-to-know, the permit log, so I'll be able to cross-check all the open permits and who's gone to visit them and what's been closed. But to give you an idea on these exemptions that she's talking about, that maybe they're going out to exemptions. Remember, exemption properties don't pay taxes, so they're out of the tax base. It's important to keep up on your exemptions, but from a priority standpoint, if you have a permit outstanding for $1 million that you need to go check, or you have an exemption property that's been exempt for 10 years, the priority would be for them to go check the $1 million permit because that's the tax-paying property. You would worry a little bit less about the one that is consistently not paying and hasn't made any changes. And that's to be expected. And that's what we should see going on. We don't see that all the time. Now, I referenced in my report, you know, big property variations. The data that I received from AssessPro from Ms. Kleiner showed that our assessor really hadn't gone to very many properties. And when I pulled all the property cards on it, I said, I want to see what the documentation is. Well, lo and behold, I found out, you know, the one at 41 Chandler Street, the exemption property that the letter was written for the Board of Assessors, there's no documentation on that property card that the assessor was there. Why? That should be an updated documented card. There were two mobile home properties visited, okay? And it was written up in the report that they had exterior inspections only. The assessor went there for exterior inspections only. Well, when I looked at the property cards, they're blank. There's no building there because they're cleared lots and there was nothing on them. I drove out last week and there were mobile homes on each lot on the trailer beds. When I called the mobile home company and I said, hey, how long have these properties, have these mobile homes been here? Well, the lady said, they're on the beds. They just got pulled in a week ago. I believed that. So, when I read on the report that I did an exterior inspection, how'd you do that? I don't think there was anything there. And you did it while it was up on the bed? And the one property that's going to be taken off the bed is actually having a garage added that hasn't been done yet. So, I look at that documentation and I say, that assessor is telling me they went and inspected eight property that was physically there. And when I look at a property card, I should see a drawing of a building there. There's no drawing, just a blank piece of paper. What it tells me is it's a new property that's being established that nothing is on it yet. And in fact, that's what it was. So, as I'm cross-checking these cards, I'm seeing a fair number of errors. And that concerns me because I don't see that with other assessors.
Ms. Ordolano, we have one minute left for our public comment period. Could you wrap it up?
Sure.
Thank you.
I gave you a example of a property card up in Kessler Farms that is an example of everything done wrong. Permit was left open for six years. Assessor, this is current, the assessor goes out, captures, says he writes on the form, went to the property in April, captured the permit. This was a year ago. The property owner ends up very upset, calling, saying, you never came out and you raised my taxes, you know, $900 for a basement refinish that I didn't, I only finished a media room. So, the assessor, after leaving a permit open for six years, never went and checked the permit file to see that the full basement wasn't finished. If they had checked the permit file, they would have seen 1,500 feet wasn't finished, only 600 was. So, they went and taxed him for the whole basement. The homeowner calls fixed-income retired people outraged because their bill went up like $900. You know, nobody came to the house. The assessor said, oh, I'll come out, I'll come out. Comes out, then he looks at the property. Then he writes on the card, went to visit. Then he changes the whole drawing on the basement. But guess what? It's too late and they have to file an abatement. That took, you know, 16 months to clear up. And meanwhile, they had to pay the full amount. And when you're on fixed income, I can tell you, these people were not happy at all. And I look at a property card like that and I scratch my head and I say, why does it say you went and visited? There's no indication you ever went to that property. And if you did, how could the drawing be so wrong? How could you not know if you walked down the stairs that only a little portion of the basement was done?
Ms. Ordolano, our public comment period is over.
Thank you. I waited very patiently to get here and I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen, I'll start on this side tonight. Alderman Jettie.
I want to congratulate Alderman Clemens and Alderman Gathwright for having the courage to be the sole nay votes on the two motions that they, or two or three motions that, I've been there and I recognize their courage in doing so.
Alderman Lopez.
So, in reference to the mayor's comments about the Tree Streets Block Party, it is this Saturday at 2:00 PM. It will be, we have closed off Ash Street between Central Street and West Hollis. We have a reggae band, Mighty Mystic, who will be there. We have a barbecue that's being hosted by Revive and Riverside Barbecue. We have a number of nonprofit organizations that are doing like carnival games for kids. We have Toucha Trucks. So, it's going to be a great event. It's free for the community. Tickets are available for the reggae concert if you want to check out the event on Facebook. But it's really an effort to kind of celebrate the diversity and community aspects of the Tree Streets that are unique to the Tree Streets. So, part of that is welcoming, so you're all welcome to come and attend. Additionally, Monday night during, I guess, the assessor's training, there's also a Ward Four Town Hall, so I will be attending that instead of the assessor's presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Cle.
Yes, I'd like to make two comments. One is the ordinance 019047. I'm really hopeful for this establishing an animal and dog park advisory committee. And I'm hoping that they go a little further based on who they're going to have on their And I'm hoping that they go a little further based on who they're going to have on their committee. I'm hoping to add one more to it. I think a school board or school department person should be on that committee also. But in keeping with this, I think that it's time that we had a free dog park as well as a place where people can let their dogs go off-leash. We have issues in Mines Falls, and we have issues in Greeley Park. So I think it's really, really important that we do that. And the other thing is, I'd like to thank, and I feel bad because I don't have all the names, of those people who stepped up to play crossing, not guards, because they're not trained, so they weren't crossing guards, but crossing walkers, where we would walk the students from one side of the street to the other side of the street. And for those people on Manchester Street, when I got halfway across and continued to go, I'm not happy. I think in all our school districts, we need to be very conscientious that it's a 20 mile per hour zone and that we should drive accordingly in order to get a sign up that would say what your speed is, we're looking at $10,000. We can't afford to put those in every single school zone. I think that we as adults and anybody who is driving should be more responsible and so on. I think the majority of people are, but just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the mayor for coming up with, hard to describe it, but practical budget. I know it was tough for you. And I really would like to compliment the people that we have working for the city, our division directors who listen to you, that worked with shopper pencils and scrunched the numbers and came up with something they think that all the citizens can live with. And I would like to give a vote of thanks, myself personally, I'm sure other members on the board, to the men and women of the city, whether you're doing clerking here at City Hall, any duty, but keeping law and order, putting out our fires, teaching our children, picking up our trash, plowing our streets. We thank you. Wish we could get you more, but we're trying. And I think what we came up with is a good budget. I'd like to thank working with Chairman Dowd of the Budget Committee. It was my pleasure to clerk for you. And I'd like to thank all the members of the Budget Committee. As with past budgets, it's yeoman work. We meet a lot, but thank you, guys. I think we came together and we did something good.